Now, this is, I'll show you my real one.
All right, let me verify that it is on Facebook, but we should be live right now. Yes, we are live.
Okay. Welcome to the May twenty-six, twenty-twenty study session at six P M. A roll call, please.
Mayor Webb? Mayor Pro Tem Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Aubrey?
Here.
Councilmember Laquiro?
Here.
Councilmember McFall?
Here.
Okay, it takes us to the licensing procedure, Mr. Foulbiter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. At the last meeting, city council had some questions regarding some of the applicants. Some of these applicants that they had questions on were previously granted licenses for medical marijuana grow or provisioning centers and have now applied for recreation licensing under the recreation licensing procedures set forth and established by the city council. City council indicated they had questions of some of the applicants. So, Mr. Campbell has invited some of the applicants here to participate. I see that Kurt Gohr's picture is up, so he is definitely here in attendance at the meeting. I also saw Tony in Rocky's picture from the other place, and I think someone from Farida Holdings is here as well. So, I don't know who you'd like to take first, Mr. Mayor, but it's up to you. I guess we could go with Mr. Kurt Gohr first because his picture is on our screen. So, the other one, pictures, I'm sure will.
Okay, and Mr. Gohr is representing Shango Hazel Park.
Point of order.
Whatever, what, sir?
What's that?
The, the sound from the mayor and the city manager is not very good quality.
That's because we're farther away from the computer so that we can.
We'll talk louder.
Pick this up. Can you hear us better now?
It's better, it's kind of going in and out or so. Does anybody else hear that?
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Let us know.
Okay, we'll open up questions for Mr. Kurt Gohr regarding Shango Hazel Park. Mr. Mayor, members of council, questions?
Any councilmembers have any questions? Amy?
Okay, hi Kurt.
Hi Amy.
Um, okay, so this is a question that I'll have for a couple of people today. Um, I, it's, it's been about two years since we approved the initial round of applications. I know there's been a lot of holdups with the state and the ordinances and everything. But while we've got a couple of the businesses are open, I just wanted to hear from you, what are, what are some of the reasons that we haven't been able to see a lot of progress on your locations at this time?
So, if that, I imagine that question is directed to me. Recently, we just had the plans approved from the city, and we now expect the final bids for the contractors to be submitted by the first week of June, of which at that time, construction on the Chrysler Building should really get moving at that point. We've had a number of delays with architectural plans and then finding contractors to bid on the project, but we believe that we've overcome a number of those obstacles. That's related to the Chrysler Drive property, on the eight-mile property, the processing facility. There has been work that's been conducted internally, and that, I think, is actually going at a much faster pace than the Chrysler Drive property. We just, we saw once we got into the property and we were able to do the original demolition, the interior objectives, what we originally had set out, there was a number of things that we uncovered internally that kind of delayed things. We had to go back to the architect a number of times, but fully expect that in June, both those projects, now that we're on, out of the lockdown, that we'll be able to accelerate both of those projects.
So, if you're able to start work next month, what's your estimated timeline for opening now?
Um, you broke up a little bit the estimated timeline for opening?
Yes.
Is that what I heard? That should be within, I would say, four months from the time that we get under construction with the Chrysler Drive, with the eight-mile facility. We have a deadline with the state, which I believe they had extended it. I think that's within three months, July, August. I think August with, with the eight-mile facility, we plan to be licensed and operational there.
Any other questions for Mr. Gohr?
I have a question I actually thought of, and, and I wish I had asked this of everybody last week, but what kind of wages are we looking at for your employees in these locations?
Well, I'd be happy to address that. So, the, the greeters, the bud tenders, they're going to be in the range of fifteen to twenty dollars an hour. We're going to attempt to hire a large percentage of local individuals that apply. And then the wages go on up from, and I'm speaking specifically with the, the provisioning, the bud tenders, the greeters, then we go up to the management stocking. So, the wage is fifteen to twenty dollars per hour, I would say, at the lower levels, and then on up depending upon skill levels, education, and so on.
Okay, I like, I like hearing fifteen as your, your baseline there.
Any more questions, Amy?
Uh, not for Kurt, no, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Kurt?
Um, I do.
Okay.
Hi, hi Kurt, how are you? Can you hear me all right?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay, um, in, in along the lines of Amy's question about the pay rate, do you have an average number of employees? I know that that has probably, I know that we have twelve to fifteen on the application, but I'm wondering if that has changed any with the potential restrictions and social distancing going forward during this pandemic?
Haven't, at this point, given a lot of thought to it, to be honest with you, taking a, taking a look at how business has been operating since the pandemic and what potential business may look like beyond. I've spent a lot of time during the lockdown, as I've been able to, is to observe what's going on at Breeze, and New Standard, and Liv, and Green Buddha, and some of the operational, the other operational provisioning centers, try to see how they're conducting business and how much extra labor time it puts into fulfilling orders. So, it's something that I need to go back with the group and kind of reexamine to see, are we looking at increased labor to, to handle this in the short term? And once the interior gets open again, how is that impacted? Because I truly believe the, as I, I've seen in other businesses, the, the curbside and the delivery service, if in fact it's adopted by the state, because as we well know, this wasn't really meant to be in the rules, the, the, you know, curbside slash drive-through just wasn't part of the rules. So, as they are adopted, I think all businesses may need to incorporate this, at least in the next couple of years to come. I think that's kind of the way that business is going. So, you know, just further analysis on where, where things go. I can't imagine that the number of employees overall would dip to what we originally projected. If anything, I would have to think that they might increase because it's going to become a little bit more labor-intensive to conduct business.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions for Kurt? Thank you, Kurt.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and Ed and Amanda and everyone else, thank you.
Okay. Farida Holdings?
Yeah, is there anybody here from Farida Holdings?
Uh, yes, my name is Seth Tompkins. I'm the attorney for Farida Holdings and Terry Farida, one of them.
Hi Seth.
Hi there.
What was your name again?
Seth Tompkins.
And Seth, you are legal counsel for Farida Holdings, correct?
I am. I, I submitted the most recent applications, and I've worked with Terry for a little bit now on this project and some other projects.
Okay, because you've got, we've got a provisioning center here at this location as well as a grow facility, correct?
Right, there was, and I, I think that there's a provisioning center, a processor, and a, and a, and a grow that was.
And a grow, right.
Two, actually, everybody, there's two Class Cs, a processing and a provisioning, and the provisioning is at a separate address within their complex area.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay Seth, we're going to have the council ask a couple of questions. One of my councilmembers, Amy's, Aubrey has some standard questions that she's going to ask all three candidates so far.
Okay. Okay, so, same question, you're initially, these locations were initially approved approximately two years ago, so just trying to determine what some of the holdups are for why these facilities aren't open and what kind of new timeline we're looking at to make sure this is still feasible.
Okay, so, Terry, as, almost immediately after getting approved, Terry, Terry had a accident and banged his head and was in a coma for, I think it was almost two months. And he woke up to find out that he had pending litigation with respect to this property with his former partner. And it seemed like, and I don't know, I can't speak to the litigation, I'm not the attorney working on that, and quite frankly, I don't know too much about it, I'm just handling these transactions. But I do know that it has something to do with whether or not the former partner can even qualify to own a license in the city or the state. So, I know that that has helped things up. Then, the lender on the parcel required that there was a split on the parcel to separate the stuff that's already commercially leased to other people to be separated from what was being used for the proposed marijuana facilities. And I think that went on for several months, and that was just recently done. Also, the original projects had the provisioning centers where the Walgreens is now located, but once Walgreens was interested in that spot, it took time to redesign to move the provisioning center to its newly proposed location. But the provisioning center location is now, the new, the new proposed location is now, it's white boxed, is all, all, all they're waiting for now is approval from the city on the, the new plans. And with respect to the grow and the processing, that was put out to bid, and it's now with an architect who's preparing a new site plan that should be within the city. They told me within thirty to forty-five days it will be submitted, and once they have site plan approval, the Farida's intent to get this thing built out and get open and operating. There were some things that were just beyond his control medically. It did take Terry a little time to get back to where he's at right now, and he's made amazing steps at recovering from his, his accident. But that, that put a hamper on things, and then the pending litigation has also cost a lot of time on this project.
Andy? Seth, do you picture the provisioning center being open, opening before the grow facility?
I think that it could be, I mean, from a, from a build-out standpoint, I know there's a lot less involved in building out a retail space and building out a manufacturing facility. And knowing that that's already white boxed, I would say that's probably their intent, but to, to get that done first, just because it's the easiest to do. But I also know that I've, that, you know, they have a lot of money and time already invested in this project, and this is a long-term project for the Faridas, so.
Well, what I'm getting at is you, to open a dispensary, you need to have the product.
Right, no.
The lot eat quicker to open, and the grow will not have produced anything for the next six months to a year after it's built.
I, I, I understand that, I understand.
Supply, plain and simple. Do they have enough space for?
Yes, they, they, they have, Mr. Farida has contacts in the business right now, and this is not his only grow facility that he's going to be operating. He's actually gotten approved at another facility, it's a smaller grow than what he's proposed at this location, but he's, he's, this is, this is a long-term project for Mr. Farida and his family. And so, he actually has another grow facility that it just got the, the, the final inspection from the state and proved, so they don't have the licenses issued yet, but it's pending, so.
Okay, well, that still answers the question where, or doesn't. Neither of these places are up and running, he could have the dispensary, the provisioning center could be open in a matter of months, and there's no product, or is?
Well, there is product, there's product on the open market to purchase right now that you can buy wholesale for, you know, it's not cheap. Of course, he'd rather have his own product to sell, the margins are going to be better from a business standpoint, but there's product out there to stock the shelves now.
Seth, there?
Yes.
I, I have a question, it's the mayor. To elaborate on what, how's Michael Hero's question was, we've had two years, and I think Amy raises two, two, essentially, medical, medical grow licenses were approved for that building, but yet there hasn't even been a shovel broke loose into the ground to start the procedure of actually growing medically for the, for the marijuana industry. What was your, what was the premise of Mr. Farida, if you know, of delaying this so long? And I'm, I'm sorry that he had an accident and everything has, you know, been postponed, but this is speaking before that. Why is this actually taking so long?
Well, I, as I discussed, there, there's pending, there's pending litigation regarding this property with his former partner that prevented him from doing a lot of things. And only recently was he allowed to, other, you know, it, he was, he's, there's pending litigation in Oakland County against his former partner regarding this property. I mean, between that and the man, I mean, the man couldn't talk for months, he.
And, and, and I have respect for that, Seth, I'm just talking back, going back two years here.
No, this happened.
Almost two years, and, and I'm just asking the question.
Yeah.
And you're having, excuse me, you're having partner issues, I understand, but is there respect factor to let our administration and our planning department know of this, that, and the rest of the council for that delay and ask for a, you know, a longer timeline at that point to pursue everything? I don't know, I don't know.
I'm sorry, may I respond? I, I believe that, I, I know that city staff has been made aware of what the process has been and what the problems have been over the past couple of years. This isn't, this shouldn't necessarily be news. I, I know that there have been communications with, I believe, I, I believe Jeff Campbell has been made aware of a lot of things. So, so the city has not been left in the dark.
Okay. Just clarification.
Yeah, and, and again, in a, in a, Mr. Farida would most, would most prefer to have everything done now because that would mean that he wouldn't have had dealt with any of the problems that he's dealt with over the past couple of years. So, you know, I think that there's light at the end of the tunnel with respect to the litigation, that's what I am told. I know that Mr. Farida, from a health standpoint, is doing much better, and he's able to make the decisions that he needs to make in order to get this project done. I know that, you know, they just spent a lot of money putting together these applications, not just, you know, not just obviously for the application fees, but for the, the soft costs and everything involved with putting together the most recent set of applications. So, there's complete intent on going forward on all of this. It's just they had some medical issues and they've had some legal issues that now seem to be.
I just want to bring that up for clarification, I'm going to bring, Mike McFall, one of our councilmen, has a question, I'll be with you in a minute, Amy.
Okay.
I just have a, two questions. One, is all of that, are all of the legal issues, are those all settled?
I, I don't believe they are all settled, but I believe they are settled to the point where it's not going to affect this project from going forward anymore, if, if that makes sense. I, I, I can't explain it anymore than that because, number one, I'm not privy to all of the information because I'm not the lawyer working on it, and two, I think there might be confidentiality issues. But I think that it has been resolved to the point where this project is no longer a subject.
Okay. And my other question was, is that the property that's on Eight Mile, Google Street View shows that as the back of Save-A-Lot, is that the Save-A-Lot building?
I.
No, so, no, there's some confusion with the addresses initially, and we can sort of correct them now because there has been the property split, but it's the air is behind Save-A-Lot, that huge vacant area behind Save-A-Lot, right there. It really abuts, George, but the property would face Eight Mile.
And it wasn't that the reason why we needed to do the property split, because I think the lender on the one property needed us to separate the commercially leased property with the marijuana property for.
I don't know about that, I mean, whatever the reasons were for that, all I can speak to is, is that that's where it's going to be located, and then the, my understanding is two zero eight zero one DeQuinder, where, where the provisioning center would be, is the one that is the furthest away to the south from the Secretary of State, so that corner of that one that faces DeQuinder, okay?
That's my understanding, too.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Okay, Amy, got a question?
Um, Mike asked my question about the status of pending litigation, because, I mean, really, until that is done, things can always take a turn, so I'm, I'm a little concerned about that. Clarification, I was wondering, I'm not familiar with the term white box?
Oh, that's where it's like, drywalls up, they're ready to pull electrical and get their permits, it's, it's like the interior stuff that you can do without permitting, it's like white boxing.
Okay, and that's the location that's part of, like, that connected strip mall?
Yeah, that's the, that's the proposed provisioning center location.
Okay, and then, um.
And the other building, I believe, still needs to actually be built.
So, that other building's going to be that forty thousand square foot building that's grow and processing?
Yes.
Okay. And then, have we, Jeff, I'm, I'm a little confused just looking at our paperwork, so if you can clarify, Jeff Campbell, or, well, anybody. This provisioning center, is it just for recreational?
No, it's for both, and so, so it was approved initially for the grow at where the Walgreens was, but since they hadn't started that and the Walgreens moved into that location, so, and that Walgreens, if, I don't know if you guys have been there, is a, just like a micro, strictly the pharmacy, it's not of any of the other stuff that's there, the one that used to be on Warren on the other side. And it's just within the same complex strip mall at that corner, based on that Walgreens wanting to move in, but they've received a conditional for medical.
Okay, so we did approve.
Yeah. And just so you guys, just for factual statements, Seth pointed out, yeah, I want to say it was probably about five to six months after the approval that Terry had his medical incident, and at that point, I mean, he was at the same point as everybody else, pretty much at that point, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Farida's lawyer?
Hi Seth, Zach Foulbiter, the city manager, I just want to make sure that you are aware and the applicants are there, that the initial approval of this was conditional upon the construction of the grow and processing center for the rear of the compound.
Yes.
They are tied hard together, feature licensure for the provisioning center is definitely tied to the construction of that facility.
They're, they're a hundred percent aware, they're a hundred percent intent on building it out, this is what they're going to do in the city of Hazel Park.
Very good. Okay. Thank you, Seth.
You're welcome, thank you. Do you have any more questions? Okay, take care, guys.
Takes us to the next one, Rocky North LLC Green Farm, is there anyone out there representing them?
Yes, this is, this is Tony Dallow.
Hi Tony.
Hey Tony.
Hi Ed, hi Mike.
How's everybody?
Good, how's everybody in the council?
Thank you.
Good, thanks Tony.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Tony is a new applicant with a new provisioning center that he is requesting here. He is applied for, obviously, the medical and recreational provisioning, and since this is a new application, Tony, why don't you take a few minutes to introduce yourself, anybody who's with you, and this is your chance to make your case to the mayor and city council as to why they should consider you for licensing in Hazel Park.
Okay, I do have. Yes, we are with Green Farm. I have Rocky Den.
Hello, everybody. Okay. Hello, so we got another person with you.
Right, yes, Rocky's right alongside with me. We, we, if accepted, we're, we'll be very excited to actually do some really nice things in Hazel Park, besides just the marijuana business, we, we want to do new development in the city. That's our strong point, and that's my really strong point because I'm with a real estate and appraisal background, and that's what I do for a living. The, the marijuana is secondary, but for Rocky, it's primary, and we have a Detroit location, I'm actually in Traverse City right now, which is currently open. Detroit is open, Calcasco, we're just waiting for the, the state approvals, but it's already built out. So, some of the concerns that, you know, that I've been hearing from the council is people actually getting up and, and doing stuff. You guys will not have that issue with us, we could sign any documentation and we could be open within a reasonable amount of time, and whatever we set forth, it'll be way before that, you know, way before that time.
Okay, council, you have any questions for Mr. Dallow or Rocky, Mike McFall?
I, I just have a, I'm a, I have a question regarding the parking lot of that building, there's only one entrance on that parking lot.
We, um, we actually, we actually have the, the lot next door where it's a real estate company, we have that in contract, and that is going to be a part of the whole entire parking lot, so it's got, there's going to be ample parking there, and it'll exceed zoning requirements.
Okay. Just because I, I'm seeing like how in the other ones that are open, and like Kurt had mentioned earlier, I don't know if you heard him talking about curbside, which might be happening, that might be a, a new normal for sales, I was just concerned about that just because there's not a real, in your initial parking lot that you have in the front, I'm not sure how you would handle that without traffic backing up onto Nine Mile.
Yeah, no, well, we, you know, we planned on, you know, making a new paved or actually a new concrete driveway with a building, we're going to tear down the existing building that's there right now, which is a small real estate office, and put a new, you know, concrete, you know, slab there with all new plumbing, piping, underground, it'll look really good. You know, we're, we're, we're also, even though it's a newer building that we have there, we're also changing the exterior to make it of a more higher-end, you know, upscale look, you know. You know, where, where it's not going to show that it's a marijuana-type establishment, it's just going to be like a very clean, you know, look.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Andy. It, the, you know, the eight-twelve building, it used to be McCallum Construction or something like that.
Continental Construction.
What was the name of it?
Continental Construction.
Oh, I remember that.
No, it was, and, and it was McCallum, and then Continental purchased it.
Yeah, it was.
It was H and R McCallum for forty years.
Then you, is the provisioning center going to take up all, because it's been renovated, there's been addition, there's a lot of storefronts, is the provisioning center taking up the entire new construction or just part of it, or will there be other?
No, it's going to be between, yes, it's, it's going to be the whole entire thing, it's going to, there's going to be a lobby area, there, you know, the. There, you know, the, an office, and then the rest is going to be more for storage, um, you know, the showroom, things in that sort.
Separated medical and rec.
Okay, so it's all that whole entire building with all the, because it looks like it's set up for maybe three separate units or something.
We, we put, um, we put, uh, a decorative glass. Um, because we don't want it to look or feel like a, like a marijuana place, um. I really feel like a part of our vision, um, you know, for the, for Nine Mile is to give it a downtown feel. Even though it's going to be a marijuana establishment place, we want to be consistent with bringing a new vibe and a new trend to Hazel Park. So like, it's, it's a part of our long-term goals for the city.
You also are mentioning about, uh, bringing a juice smoothie establishment and.
A tropical smoothie or, um, Beyond Juice, where, where, um, talks with them. We haven't agreed on, um, you know, which one, um, is going to be, uh, the, uh, the choice that we're going to be bringing. Depending on, um, you know, the, the rental rates that, you know, we're going to kind of like let them bid it out and see, you know, which one's going to. You know, uh, for the build out that we're going to do, because we, we're, we're planning on tearing down and putting a new building.
You also mentioning, uh, the applicant is looking at developing condos at the lot just north of Tubby's along Chrysler Drive.
Correct, that's the, uh, that's the Chrysler Drive project, cor- correct, uh, more like a, uh, like a new trend, uh, studios. Slash, you know, condo type, um, give it a like a mixed feel, a little nicer than what, um, what downtown Ferndale has. To kind of bring in a, you know, a, a, a new, younger trendy crowd into the city. Um, it really fits, um. You know, my theme of like what, you know, bringing new attraction to the city, I think is very important. It's not, it's not only going to help our business, it's going to also help the city. We're also in talks right now, um, with, uh, Village Hall. And, um, uh, they also have two liquor licenses there. And if we are in agreement with them on purchasing that building, we're going to, um, make that into. A restaurant, um, bar, and, and I used to own a few bars, um, like about ten years ago. So I have experience with that, and I have, um, I have people that are in Ferndale right now that are. Um, actually considering bringing some new trends to Hazel Park as we speak.
That's right. Which, where, where was that spot?
Uh, Village, it, it, it's, it's an older, uh, rundown, in my opinion, um, banquet hall. Um, it, it, it's an ice store, so we want to redevelop, uh, we want to re, uh, redevelop that whole building. It's right off Nine Mile Road.
Mike.
Ten twenty four.
It is the large two-story, um, rental hall with a giant parking lot next door. It's right across the street from Boucher Me.
Yes, right across the store from Boucher Me's, uh, where, um, Rick and, um, Eddie.
I'm going to send you a picture.
Okay, Amy, you have some questions?
Yeah, real quick while we're talking about the banquet hall, isn't that one of our other applicants?
I have no idea. I, I mean, uh, from my, from my understanding, it's not in contract, and I'm in negotiations with. Uh, the owner right now.
Yeah, the, the banquet hall owner is not necessary, he's not the applicant. So this would clearly affect whoever the applicant would be. So I.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, yeah. So basically, I, and I'm scheduled to actually have a conversation with the owner tomorrow, so.
Please do.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so that's, I, I've got more questions than that.
Go ahead, Amy.
God, am I drowning in paper? Um. It's down there. Wait, we're back. And my video cut out for a little bit, so I apologize if any of this was answered. We're, we're on Green Farm. Um, I have a quick question, uh, this might go to, to Jeff on the report we got. Um, integrity, moral character, quo- cooperation, community involvement, it says the applicant donated. And it appears to be an incomplete sentence.
I apologize about that. Uh, the applicant actually, um, is, uh, volunteered already and donated some. Uh, serology antibody test to the city of Hazel Park, uh, for, uh, use by certain employees. Uh, and then is offered, um, to test the, the vast majority of the city upon its dime. Uh, it's just been a. Um, a coordination and Mr. Global took a to speak to this as well, a coordination issue and making sure that we're not. Inflicting with anything related to the county, um, but he has been very helpful about offering tests to the various individuals of the city of Hazel Park as well.
Yeah, he's also, and he can correct me if he's wrong, he's also donated, uh, personal protective equipment to city hall. To the fire department and the police department as well.
Correct, and ninety-five masks to our.
So, yeah, so he has donated, again, it's not through lack of his generosity that widespread testing didn't happen. It was concern from the county. Mr. Campbell and I were, uh, conversing with them on that. But Mr. Dallow was willing to provide that. Uh, he has donated, like I said, a ton of PPE and other stuff to the city. Uh, I have a question for him.
Can I finish my questions?
Sure, sure, sure.
Thank you.
Of course, if you're not done, talk.
I am, you know, I'm never done. Um, so it states on here, um, a proposed a hundred and twenty full and part-time employees. Um, most of these applicants, we're looking at fifteen to twenty. Uh, so I just want to get clarification on this is. And if this is a correct number, um, and what a hundred and twenty people are going to be doing at. At this, this provisioning center.
When, um, when we apply, there's also rec that's, um, you know, a, a, a big factor with this. And in, in my opinion, it's going to increase, um, business. Our, our regular locations. Um, you know, have about, you know, I mean, we have three locations that are open right now. And our, our Detroit location has over forty employees and it's only, you know, medical. So, um, we're expecting, you know, uh, high numbers with it being rec. So that, that's where those numbers came into fact. And then you have accounting, you have, uh, managers. You got, um, a lot of people, you know, in this, you know, in this industry don't want to work every single day. So there is going to be, you know, you, you, you're going to have to be fully staffed, and especially right now with curbside. That increases your, um, you, you, your workforce.
Okay, what kind of salaries are we talking about at the low end?
At, at the low, the minimum is fifteen dollars an hour. And we're also right now, because we're growing at a rapid pace, um, you know, we're looking at, um, you know, insurance for the employees. And we're big on hiring, uh, you know, locals, um, because that, that helps us big time.
Okay, um, and I have another question. Oh, where did it go? So. It says on here, I know this is one of the, the information we collect, um, on the map. This is close to the junior high school. I believe our requirement is five hundred feet.
That fits, uh, within the, oh, that actually exceeds the requirement. Um, that was done by, you know, our architectural guys and Google, um, you know, maps and, um.
When I look at Google Maps, it's like exactly five hundred feet, so I wanted to make sure that we have somebody verify this distance. Um, maybe on our end if we can.
Sure, Jeff can do that.
It's very, I mean, it's literally when I run it proper, I, I can't do property line to property line. Because I can't see the property lines, but when I run it from the edge of building, edge of building, um, it's five hundred feet. And I imagine it would be less than that when you follow the appropriate property line to property line.
Not as the bird flies, um, just so you know. We have not measured it that way, because we would take it from the car or a pedestrian walking and not as the bird flies. So I will, I will confirm that for you.
And that's how the state, because I, I know it's inconsistent when there's measurement requirements, so I just want to make sure with. The very close proximity to Scout Park and the junior high, that this is in fact within the ordinance requirements. So I just want to make sure, um, if we double check that that's, um, we're good to go. This one just appears to be pretty darn close. Um, and. That is my last question for this gentleman.
Okay.
One more.
Sure.
What's the, uh, timeline we're looking at if this is approved to, to get this facility open?
Uh, we could be open less than four months.
We, we, we'll work really hard to get it opened up. Uh, I have a really good track record with, uh, state and all the local, uh, areas that I'm currently in.
I've heard that before.
Well, do you have the product for, that would be ready to put into the provisioning?
Yes, yes, sir. I actually do business with a, with a, with a, especially that's approved by you guys right now, and they can vouch for me. Briefs can vouch for me that, uh, I open my places up pretty quick. I have a really good relationship with them.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, this, Tony, this is Zach Global, sir. Uh, I have a question. You are aware, right, that when you submit these plans, and all the applicants need to be aware of this as well. That the community involvement, uh, aspect of that, and when you say, we're going to bring these other businesses in. We expect that we're going to be delivering on these promises.
Absolutely. We're, we're very confident on delivering and exceeding. Um, if you guys, um, actually take a look at our, at the business plan that I submitted. We're also giving four percent of our net proceeds, okay? To city, fire, police, and school. Um, that's number one. We're also within our business plan, we're also redoing Jessica Nagel Park on our own, no other help. That's on our own, we're going to do that. So, you know, uh, we, we love doing stuff like this and some.
We, we want to build the bridge, not destroy it.
Any other questions for Mr. Tony Dallow or Rocky? Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen.
Jeff, did you invite anybody else?
I, I didn't hear that, Ed.
I said Jeff Campbell, did you invite anybody else?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, what I'd like to do then is to, uh, invite these three. Uh, between now and our June meeting, uh, to my office to go over their plans in a little more detail, and then bring them back to you. Uh, the first meeting in June, if that's okay.
Don't we have more applicants?
That was the three that we.
Those three that we have, uh, invited.
Well, so, yeah, we don't, we didn't hear from any of the grows, because the two, uh, well, there's one grow that is classy. The other grows are classy, which is a non. You can have those grows appear before you, but we only have limited time. So we went through three and fifty minutes. So we can have another set of them in front of you in another study session like this, and then wrap it all up, but I'm just trying.
Yeah, if you want to do the grows, you can bring the grows in.
I, I just wanted to be clear, so we're only, you're proposing this because there's no one from these other remaining applications here today.
There is no one that was invited, correct, Jeff?
Correct.
Yeah, they weren't invited.
It could be JDS Brothers, right? That's on the list we got here.
There's another one.
Green Acres, yeah, Green Acres Wellness Center LLC.
Oh, the, I'm sorry, you're right.
Green Acres, JDS, and Green Door. Okay, so we're just piecemealing this.
We could have another work study next week with the grows, if you want.
Two options are to do the grows and the remaining, uh, a work study remaining next week. Or you want to do it in, at five thirty before the next council meeting to make sure we can.
I think we should have it next week. We should have it just about to cover the rest of the ones that we want to talk to. Any council members want to talk to any, whether one of these specifically let Jeff or Ed know by Wednesday or Thursday, Thursday this week. So they can notify them, and we can have a work study next week and talk to them, and then we can have. It put on the, we can make a decision at the June eighth meeting, if you'd like.
Yeah, and like, yeah, there's not a ton of notice required, obviously, for Zoom meetings, which is nice for these folks as well.
Thank you for the clarification.
Welcome.
If that's okay with council, it's up to you. Anybody up for one? Everybody up for another Zoom meeting?
Yeah.
All right. So Jeff and Ed, get back with us next, by the end of the week, let us know what day they want to do this.
You guys need to let us know who you want to talk to, though, who you have questions on.
Okay?
Anybody we've, anybody we've approved that hasn't opened, that's who we want to talk to.
All right. MPM and Green Peaks.
No, I think the other.
They've already been approved.
Yeah, I think that you're, you're either talking about the one, the Green Door on South John R. Um, and if you have questions about that specific application, um, you have, uh, the, the. And the two micro businesses, and then the two new grows, and that's basically it. And Kurt, you know, addressed his processing, which is the only remaining solo processing.
Right. My other concern is that we have, um, some, some confusing language. And I would like to get that all kind of delineated. I know Amy has brought this up, and I think Mike and Mike have both brought it up as well, that. Um, we have multiple names for the same business, and it's getting confusing, and it's also, I think, difficult. It's definitely difficult for us to understand it. We have it in front of us. I can't imagine how the residents feel hearing, you know, eighteen different names. Thinking that, uh, every one of those is a provisioning center or some other business, that's very confusing, it's very overwhelming. And I think that we need to do a better job of delineating that and making sure that we're referring to the same businesses by the same name every time. So that we can go forward and, and be more efficient in our delivery of, of information.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I think they need to go by one business name. That's going to be there, whether it's the LLC they're doing business for, I don't care about. Who they're affiliated with nationally, whatever. We need to go with one business name.
Well, that's, that's fine. It's just got to be the one that's on the app that they're applying for at the state level. That's the one that this has to be.
Yeah, that's got to be the same one that they apply with us.
That's the one that counts. Okay.
For, for the record, I'm okay when it's like a hyphenated, like you've done on here, um, some of them are, you know, like Helios one slash New Standard. That's acceptable, that makes complete sense to me, but when we refer to it, we should refer to it then by that entire name. So that it's not confusing. Okay, thanks.
No, just so you know, though, it gets, it's, it's not just us. The state gets really sensitive too, when you list a DBA. And they want it specifically with the LLC that's listed and registered, so really have to be careful with this, because otherwise that will cause a two-month delay. Potentially with the state, when, if we don't give it the right answer and, or do the right entity and approve the right entity. I know from a communication standpoint, it kind of sucks when it's, you know, like, for instance, Joe Barr is called Host Incorporated, is the name of the business company. And that's who has the liquor license. But, you know, how many people know what Host Incorporated is versus Joe Barr? Just as an example, I agree, it's confusing, it sucks, but we'll do, we'll try to do better and be more consistent.
Maybe if.
I think it, I think most, I think some of it comes on our own end, though, because we, one time we'll use the address, another time we use the application number, and then another time we use. One of their many names.
Yeah, I just usually go by the applicants.
Yeah, maybe we can just, on like these reports, divide the entity name from the, the business name that'll be on the building. To make it a little bit more clear, and then when we make motions, you can just tell us which name we need to use in that motion. But we're, it's, it's just so in, it's just so inconsistent that it's hard to follow along, even on our internal documents. So maybe if we can just divide that out, clear it up, something, if we have to keep doing these reports, just, just make it more, more clear. Which one is which? What's the, the legal entity and which one is the sign on the building?
Jeff, I also confirmed the Rocky or the Dallos. I don't have it building to building, but I have it address to address, and it's point three miles, which is fifteen eighty-four feet. I can't tell you building to building, though, but.
I can't tell you building to building though, but.
Okay, we'll look at it and figure it out.
I mean, that's not the legal requirement, as you know, but. Registered address to registered address. It's fifteen, it's point three fifteen eighty-four feet. For what it's worth.
Okay.
All right, yeah, let's recess for five minutes then and we'll reconvene. If you want to shut down your audio and take a quick break before we begin. The uh, next meeting at seven o'clock. This is a good time to take a bathroom break. Uh, we're going to mute for five minutes. And uh, we'll reconvene at seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To end discrimination and prejudice. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council recognize and declare June twenty twenty as Pride Month in the city of Hazel Park, Michigan, and encourage our residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality members of the LGBTQ community face and celebrate the contributions that enhance our friendly city.
Okay, has been so moved, so proclimated.
Thank you.
Civic announcements, anyone for civic announcements?
Will the, Mr. Mayor, will there be a flag raising thing, ceremony?
There will not be a flag raising due to social distancing regulations. But what we will do is we will be placing the flag up on the flag pole on June first. And it will fly for the entire month of June as we do over here. I want to thank Mike McCall for ordering us a brand new flag. So we don't have to take our flag that we have currently residing in the display case next to the clerk's office. So we're going to leave that one up there and it will stay up there. And we will thank Mike for his generous donation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Civic announcements, anyone have any civic announcements? Hearing no civic announcements.
How about this, Mr. Mayor, remind everybody about the census.
Getting there. Thank you, Andy. But if you want to, go right ahead.
That's it, that's the commercial. I, I don't, I don't know if Mike McCall's been keeping track. The city of Hazel Park was ahead, I haven't kept track.
We are doing fairly well. Sorry, Mike.
No, go ahead.
We are doing fairly well. If you haven't filed, please take a moment. Dig up that piece of mail that you got, you put in a corner and go online and file. Okay? And doesn't take long. Exactly. Doesn't take long. See the testimony there?
I mean, I'm pretty sure that we're still ahead of the state return overall. And we were just shy of seventy percent, which is better than what we did in twenty ten, so.
Yeah, this has been a much better level of participation. This is, it's, it's a very good job that our residents have done, so.
Everybody's participating. Go ahead, Jeff.
Very briefly, just so you guys know, since we are a Main Street community, we are going to be first in line to receive priority reopening kits from Oakland County. They, they will be for businesses of fifty people, fifty employees and under. Generally speaking, we're going to be talking about retail restaurants and offices such as lawyers, doctors, dentists. And they will have first priority, but they will be able to get a reopening kit, which is basically PPE materials. It will be delivered and dropped off at the ice arena and we will have a half day open house and then by appointment only for you to pick them up from the ice arena. But that will hopefully be happening next week before the actual reopening of June twelfth is proposed.
Okay. Any other civic announcements from the public?
Well, I just wanted to ask, does that include churches as well? You didn't say so, but I suppose so.
It, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know, you'd have to apply with Oakland County for that.
Okay, we'll check.
The PPE application says five oh one C three's and nonprofit, so probably. Are you, are citizens allowed to speak for civic announcements?
If you have a civic announcement for.
She does, I invited her here.
Hi, hi, Hazel Park, my name's Julie Music, I represent City of Ferndale for Ferndale Pride and I wanted to thank you for passing your resolution today. Very sad not to see the first Hazel Park Pride in the park. But we have opened up an event in Ferndale and it is, the prizes, we're going to go out to a twenty mile radius. So obviously Hazel Park is definitely included in the prize factor of it. So people can decorate their house for pride and there's a link called our home, we're here, I can send it to you, it's our pride event. And you can post their pictures and then we'll pick some winners and highlight how people are celebrating pride at home this year as it's a little bit different. And then hopefully by September, we'll be back to clear if we are, we'll have a pride festival and if not, we'll keep everyone healthy and safe and we'll come back for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for attending, Julie, I appreciate it.
Anyone else with a civic announcement? Now it moves us to public discussion. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments they would like to make? Pastor.
Okay, hello, everybody. And sorry about that, asking that question. But I did want to, one, apologize, last week I wanted to share with you the information that I had asked about in reference to the cell tower situation, but I wasn't able to find the Zoom sign on info, but I've got it now, so I'm here. And I've got one comment on that and then one question. And maybe I can do the question first. Is, how, how is the schedule for the construction, especially I seventy five and right there? Here we are, does it seem to be on schedule, is anybody noticing that? There's still project, the last projection I saw was for November. Does this still seem to be in that timeframe?
Yes, pastor, from what we hear from the state, and again, they do update us, not as frequently as we would like. But they do update us and it seems that construction is running pretty much on schedule. So hopefully we'll be opening up the Woodward Heights Bridge within the next couple of weeks. And that will be, that's scheduled to be the first one that's going to be completed.
And where can I find, I noticed there's a lot of activity going on at the westbound to, I mean, the north seventy five to westbound six ninety six. Is there going to be similar work done on eastbound from north seventy five to six ninety six?
Probably, but you're going to have to get that schedule from their website.
Okay, all right, I'll look up for that one. Then my point about the cell tower safety issue, I checked with an attorney friend and he sent to me a, a, a piece from a place called Safety Solutions addressing safety of tower mounted cellular antennas. The safety issues with the towers. RF energy and human body RF effects from cellular phone versus tower antennas. Basically, they said that it looks like that there's no issue if you're a certain distance from the actual tower itself. But to me, that's still not satisfactory, so I'm going to also pursue then further the, the State Department that handles that to find out how can we, as a congregation, since we're that close, be able to, at, at a minimum, measure or either keep an eye on any kind of RF energy issues that may be dealing with our building when we're in, when we're meeting. And so I will also, if you don't mind, report back what I find from there. And again, I apologize for not getting to it on last week.
Pastor Scott, I wanted to address a little bit of information because I did do a little bit of research on this. The way that the wattage works, they, they do this on an estimated distance possible because all of these cell towers are based on that they have to be put up in the air, so all of the measurements are based on them being that far away from your body on, for a reason, because that's where they're all installed. But one of the websites I found, which I would love to quote is, it says, a light bulb has about a sixty watt energy consumption and the emitted light and heat will be in that range since your home distance to a light bulb will be two to three meters, the impact from the light bulb on your body will be more than a million times higher than a five G tower cell. So we don't, we don't run away from light bulbs, they're a million times more effective to us than the radio cell towers, the five G towers. And this is, this specifically is from a website called grandmetrick.com. But I did find some others, I just really enjoyed that quote because light bulbs are something we can all relate to. And I will happily, and I will happily send this over to you as well. The five G is something that's very interesting to me. But I, I think I find it interesting for maybe a different reason, but I am interested in it, so. But I thank you for coming and asking and listening.
Okay, and I wanted to respond in terms of, you know, you, you, you go with information that you get available and there's a guy who's a member of our congregation who used to work for cell tower locations and he ended up with a meter that measures RF radiation within the range of the tower, et cetera, et cetera. And the one that he had, it does show in certain areas an unusual amount. And that's why I wanted to also engage the state agency as to being more sensitive and aware of doing that, because you know, we got, we got children, babies, et cetera, et cetera. And oops, it's too late. And I just want to be able to stay responsible and stay on top of the issue, yes? And so please send out a, really appreciate it. And then my last, my last point is, okay, so we've got this June twelfth potential stay-at-home order release. Has there been any concern to the council in relationship to, for example, us with our small number congregation, being able to have a kind of service with cars out on the parking lot, et cetera, et cetera? Is there some major resistance to that or some process that I need to go through in order to?
Pastor, I don't think there's any problem with you guys having some kind of a service in your cars. What we do ask though is that no one use a really loud loudspeaker. It's better, it's better for us if folks use like Facebook Live and things like that, that way everybody in their cars can turn in and they can listen to the sermon on their cell phones or their tablets and it's not blasting through the neighborhood. So I think that's been the biggest problem that we had with some of the religious services that had been in parking lots was they created a disturbance.
There's also a rate, there's also the ability to connect with a radio station.
There is, absolutely.
Yes, we'll look forward to that as well.
At my father's church, he was telling me this Sunday, they parked two cars apart, sat in lawn chairs in front of their car and everybody went on their cell phones for the speaker part of listening every, listening to the pastor.
Okay, good ideas.
And the pastor stood outside in the parking lot at the front of the church.
Okay, good ideas, thank you very much, yes?
Apply common sense.
Of course. Of course, and especially, especially as relates to volume. We've had events on our parking lot, remember the Health Fair and, and different things like that. We've even had some occasion out there and we're very sensitive to making sure. Gratefully, we're across the surface drive, so we're not really, really that close, close to houses. And Tom Selman and the person lives across the street, they're all very close and we get along very well with neighbor and we don't want to disrupt that in any way. Okay, so thank you very much, we'll be sure and take that into consideration.
Anyone out there for public discussion? Seeing no one, hearing no one, we'll close public discussion. Approval of the consent agenda as proposed, council?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda items one through three.
Do you support?
Support.
Do I have any discussion? Sentient? Motion passes. Budget, truth and taxation public hearing. I open up the public hearing for the budget of truth and taxation. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on our budget as presented and has been posted?
May I ask a question?
We're at the public right now.
It's about what you just said, though.
I said the public.
Yeah, where was it posted?
I thought it was posted.
I don't think it was posted anywhere for the public to see.
Oh, okay. We will post it.
It's posted now on the website as of this afternoon.
It was posted on the website?
So how do we have a public hearing on information the public hasn't seen?
It's also always available, we posted it in the newspaper to contact city clerk if they wanted a copy.
No one contacted us for the record.
No one reads the newspaper anymore. We could make this information available online and I could not find it online today. I'd like to reschedule this public hearing.
I don't think by law you can reschedule this.
Okay, I'd like to schedule a second public hearing.
But I think you need to pass this tonight by charter. Again, it's going to require another publication, we haven't received any requests for this, it's up, it's online. If anybody wants to see it, they can see it.
I think the fact that we didn't have any, I think the reason, I think the fact that we didn't have any requests should be concerning. Like the fact that.
I was told it was posted.
It was today, apparently, but before that it was not, so that is a concern to me. If our budget is not, if our budget is not due until beginning of July, why could we not postpone this a week?
It is due at the end of May, by charter.
We, we always approve the budget, it's a first reading approval, there's always, there's a lot of discussion between the time of first reading and the time.
There is, there's not a first reading for budgets, that's only for.
We've always done it, Ed.
No, that's, there's, we've never done it like that, there's no first reading for budgets.
Where, sorry, some of this cut out, so I apologize, I missed some of the conversation, I'm having internet trouble. Where on the website is this posted?
Under the, the link for this meeting under latest news now.
Because when I checked there earlier, it was not there.
It was after you had emailed.
So that, that's, it should be available from the time of the public hearing. Where is it, I'm sorry, I'm multitasking, where is it in our charter that we have to approve this today?
Recession. Figure five minute recess, we'll look it up. Move to recess for five minutes.
Support.
Okay. Five minute recess.
Actually having issues with the menu on our website, like the first items, because there's two menu items below that. When I go to, like, when I click on city government, it's actually not working for me, the menu closes. Like, I don't know if you know what I'm saying, Jimmy, like, it says online information, then COVID nineteen updates right under city government and community. When I scroll down to, after the menu opens from community or city government, the menu automatically closed, the dropdown menu does, so I can't access any of those things.
I don't have any control over that part of the website, but I can pass it along.
Okay, is that Jared?
I believe that would probably be communications, yes.
Okay, alright, thanks.
If I can jump in, it seems like things are kind of scaled different on the website, because at least on the resolution that I'm on, on my laptop, the online information and COVID nineteen updates are showing up on the, the second line. So I don't know if, like, with the web design, it's going to need something for that element of the page to kind of adjust to the resolutions or.
I, I agree, Jake, because like, when I, when I, on my screen here, on my monitor, I can actually faintly see those words where it says COVID nineteen updates across where that first menu item where it says mayor and council. Yeah, and I can, yeah, see how there's like white, there's little white marks in there, that's actually the lettering.
Right. Yeah, probably something the web designer can fix.
Well, but the point of the matter is, I'm, I'm public and I'm looking and I'm having a hard time and you're having a hard time. So how is general public going to be able to get this information readily in order to feel confident that they can support it or understand it?
Agreed.
Completely unrelated to all of this, my HVAC guys just left and said that my HVAC is working now. So in two hours, my house should not be eighty-six degrees anymore.
Hey, that's cool.
I'll take small victories, man, I'll take small victories.
Andy was like, your cat just making a noise?
That's Carol's Luna. The one that knocked it, pushes things around.
I think they're looking at it, but I found it.
It's section eight point five. So maybe I have to wait till we're on, but go to, hold on. Give me to send it to you, would that be easier?
Yeah.
I've got Munich code pulled up, so I'm fine.
So yeah, go to chapter seven, section eight point five. So wait, I'm sorry, chapter eight, that was, sir, my Roman numerals is bad. Go, so go to chapter eight, general finance, city budget and funds. And then when you go to section eight point five, at the second regular meeting of the council in May of each year, the council shall pass an annual appropriation resolution, which shall be based on the budget submitted by the city manager.
Thank you, I'll save the rest of my comments for when we're out of recess.
Yeah, 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 so, and I texted Ed because I'm at home in there. Yeah, yeah, so I don't know where they're at, but there you go.
That's why we like you, Amanda.
And your pretty living room.
It's a fake living room. I'll show you.
I know, I know.
No, if you saw my real living room, it'd be chaos behind me.
You don't want to know what's behind me.
Amy, we, you've got a couple of nice backgrounds, Amy.
Yeah, because you don't want to know what's behind me.
No, that's what I'm saying.
When, when you got to make an office, you make an office.
Hello.
Yeah, happen.
My office is full of kittens currently.
Drowning in papers, Amy, how you described it?
Um, well, it's a multi-use room, there's a closet, a dresser, there's plants, there's dogs, there's paper, there's a non-functioning printer.
Like everybody's.
Like everybody else, but we have a nice, beautiful background, so y'all don't have to look at it. And I closed the door, so you don't have to hear the dogs, but I am sweating to death in here. I feel like Alyssa.
Yeah. Let me, let me tell you, like, when you walk in your house and it's hotter inside than it is outside, it's not nice.
Carol was working at the health department and their heat was stuck on for the day. Eighty something, eighty-eight degrees.
That's disgusting, two, two degrees warmer than my house, I know exactly how she feels. I got to sleep in that last night, when, when I went to bed. Yeah, when I went to bed, it was eighty-one degrees last night when I went to bed in my house, eighty-one degrees.
Many years. I came home from a city council meeting and it was eighty-something degrees all day and I'd left, you know.
Our air conditioning went out, so, um, it's fun.
And our heat had, the thermostat gone bad and the heat.
Go back on.
Okay. Motion to come back from recess.
Motion to return from recess.
Support.
Okay, we have it right here. The second regular meeting of the council in May each year, council shall pass an annual appropriation resolution, which will be based on the budget submitted by the city manager as approved and amended by the city council.
Section eight point five of the charter. And just for, since we got that clarified and there was some confusion back and forth, not this, maybe not the next scheduled meeting, but sometime in June or July, we need to make an adoption to make it a change to our charter to include, you know, or, or, or some kind of change to give direction to our finance department to include it being posted for online and, and other ways, so it can be done next year. Some other, some other venue besides the newspaper.
Because several of the papers weren't even publishing, like C and G that goes to every house, they weren't even publishing.
But it was published in conference.
And it was published at least two weeks ago, approximately.
Well, and according. And according to the charter, technically what you have in there is city manager presents the report, council vote, second week of May. And you don't even publish the budget until July. So it's not, the publication is just so the public knows what it, what's there, at least as it's written in that first section. It's not even a pre-publication or inspection to the public.
We will have public, after it's adopted, we will have copies available to the public. It's posted on the website too, it's already on the website.
Do it sooner, but you're required to by July first.
Right, and if the council would feel better, I can, we can also open it up for another public hearing on the budget at the next regular city council meeting.
Again, people can always speak about this.
And speak about it.
At any time, but in terms of formal public hearing, no, that's all been published, that's all been paid for, we've complied with the statute. Everything that needs to be done to pass this tonight has already been done. So, you know, we're asking to pass it. There's no reason not to pass it. This is not like any other budget that has ever been presented to any other city council in the history of the city of Hazel Park.
Just a closure, let me, let me finish the public hearing. I've opened up the public hearing for the truth and taxation of the budget. Is anyone else from the public that's out there want to speak on it? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now we can go to the adoption of the budget and approval. Council, what would be your wish? Or, or we can have more discussion about it. Amy?
Um, I'd like to make a couple of motions. I've misplaced one of them. But for clarification, I, I mean, it wasn't posted on the website until this afternoon. I didn't receive a final copy of anything until four twenty today. It wasn't even submitted to us in our packet like it has been in years past. I'm a little frustrated with the budget process this year, completely. Usually we have time to at least discuss it a little bit more publicly and then make some recommendations. I understand we're, we're approving a placeholder. But there, there's a lot that just did not go right with, with the budget this time.
Actually, I would dispute that. Respectfully, I must dispute that. There's a lot that is very unique to this budget process that we've never seen in any other year in history because of the coronavirus.
Which is why we should have more time to discuss it.
Unfortunately, statutorily and by charter, you don't have more time to discuss it. What other communities are doing is they're passing the budget, you mentioned the word placeholder. What other communities are doing is the passing of the budget, you mentioned the word placeholder. That's what this is. We didn't even get any information from the revenue estimating conference with the state of Michigan until Friday, May fifteenth. So we're flying somewhat blind here and we, without that information, anything that we would have plugged in to the budget before then would have simply been a fairy tale. This is at least a close approximation based upon what the state is telling us. Now that was a week and two days ago. There are three full-time employees, four full-time employees working full-time in, uh, city hall right now. So I want to commend Lacy for working as hard as she did in the intervening week and a half to get this input together from the time that we got any kind of viable numbers at all whatsoever. And these numbers are not, uh, the greatest numbers either. You mentioned placeholder, that's exactly what this is. Your approval of placeholder budget today, this is not the final budget. You're gonna have to go back and you're gonna have to amend that document. But we have to have something to move forward from as a starting point for us to know where we need to amend from and to move forward. We need something in place for our charter to begin the fiscal year. We still do not have a clear picture of the long tail of what the coronavirus is going to look like. We hope the state was at least close to the figures that they projected when they did the revenue estimating conference on Friday, May fifteenth. Go ahead, Lacy. Come up here, Lacy.
These were emailed through the best of what we knew. You were emailed a copy on May eighteenth. Um, I said, after the conference, I sent Edward on Friday, May fifteenth. He looked over it over the weekend. I sent it to you guys on May eighteenth. It was just general fund, however, the rest of the remaining funds are, uh, have very little influence. They're, you know, they're money, they're ins and outs, they're special revenue funds. There's not much we can do there. So I did send you the general fund to the best of what we had on that day. It changed very little. I had no comments or questions from any of you guys from May eighteenth until today.
That's because these things get lost in our email when we get a bunch of email. But every Friday I get a packet in my door with news articles that are not nearly as important as this budget. And that's not you, Lacy. This information should, you guys should have guaranteed we received this information timely. I personally do not feel that we did. I mean, so I, I commend Lacy. Lacy has got probably one of the hardest jobs next to us in this city. But an email is not always sufficient. I don't need printed out newspaper articles. I need the budget. And sometimes technology fails. I don't get notifications on my phone that I didn't get an email. It gets lost in the spam folder and I don't notice it until a few days ago. And, and this is what I'm saying. You, you've given me every other piece of paper in the world but the budget, the community you post to a newspaper, but you don't actually post it online, which like, complying with the state statute is one thing, but we can do better. We do not have to do the minimum. We can make this information accessible to the public. We have a website, we have a Facebook page, we have a newsletter. Let's use them.
Well, yes, and we try to get that stuff out there as soon as we possibly can. This is not a normal budget year. No one should draw any conclusions about how we do things or what our normal course of action is based upon what we've had to do this year to put together that document for you to keep the, uh, process of city government going forward. Uh, you've got a, a, a completely heretofore situation we've never seen before, heretofore unseen situation. It's never happened before like the coronavirus where everything is shut down. And we know that it's had a significant impact on what we're gonna get in terms of state revenue sharing, uh, and other revenue sources in the city. And we didn't even have that information to plug into the budget until, uh, May fifteenth. So as soon as she got it to you, as soon as she got it, she turned around, plugged it in and emailed it on the eighteen.
And, and the charter says that it's to be made available to the public the first day of July.
But we have a public hearing. We have a public hearing for the public. And we make copies available to the public, but we didn't actually make copies available to the public.
Going forward, I will happily, happily do it on the website. We follow the, the rules that we've done for, you know, the citation here as far as posting in the newspaper. Um, I do apologize that, that it didn't get in your Friday packets. I honestly didn't include it in your Friday packets because I thought that prior Monday that you had had it in your emails. Uh, I just figured that, you know, because I didn't have the entire budget at that time wrapped up, just, you know, general, I didn't re, resubmit the general fund to you. Going forward, I will make sure that an email communication is followed up with printed copies. We will make sure between, uh, the clerk and I that it gets posted as early as possible on the website. We will continue to do it in the newspaper because that is what my understanding is required.
That is required by statute.
And that's the law that we apply.
We, we have to comply with that law. We have asked the Michigan municipal lobby hour and a half uh, with the legislature to make sure that it is only, uh, website posting. But the newspapers have lobbied the legislature as well because they like the revenue that they get from legal notices. And that's what we are required to do by law.
I don't think, yeah, nobody, nobody here is complaining about the fact that we posted in the newspaper. We're complaining about the fact that it's only been posted in the newspaper. That's, that's where we're having an issue. And I think part of our confusion is as well is we are, many of us on council are working towards making the transparency more available and making the information more available and accessible to people as easy as possible and mirroring what other communities do. And the issue that we see and that we know we're going to hear is we have a public hearing, but no information has been widely available to the public when it could easily be done that way. So that is, that's a concern.
And I don't think anybody here is arguing with that at all. We want to be as transparent as possible. We want to put as much information out there as we can. I've got to, I've got to keep stressing for you all, though, the uniqueness of this year. You, you, you've got to get that, okay?
I understand the uniqueness of the budget.
Other budget that you've ever, that I have ever prepared in the eighteen years that I've been city manager. And we've never had to go to the wire like this to try to find out what the state thought that they were going to be able to, to give us. So, uh, we didn't even actually, we weren't able to even complete everything until last week. And that's the difficulty complying with state law, complying with our charter and trying to do the best possible job that we can with a budget, you know, again. I'm not confident in those revenue estimating numbers that the state gave us. That is their best guess based upon their expertise and analyzing what they've got to look at in terms of the numbers. We're gonna have to look at this and revisit this again in August. We're probably gonna have to have a serious look at this because even these pictures will change. This is not like any other year.
Usually we have those actuaria numbers come in at the end of April, not the week before our budget is sent us. So on Lacy's defense, she's worked, I think, very hard to get this.
She's worked especially in light of COVID.
But I want to say, we need to, as a council, make a motion at the next meeting to add that this be posted in, in, it, on internet, Facebook, whatever, whatever, whatever place we want to put it.
I think what I'm here, the, yeah, I think the mayor succinctly is sort of getting everybody's concerns together because I, I think the issue too is that it, there is compliance with the law right now, um, other than the fact that it's not the second week of May, I think we're. But we've got, I mean, the budget has to be approved, especially with COVID. What if you're behind the eight ball and moving things because the state needs the, the budget approved, all those types of things that are happening? But absolutely, you guys need to make a motion to address the publication issue and how you guys will be served with it. And thank goodness you raised those issues because it, maybe it would just be another year with it not happening, Amy, but you guys have to pass a budget.
We have to comply with our charter.
Like it has to happen. But, um.
I do think that we all understand the difficulty in this budget. I don't think anybody here is minimizing that at all. I don't, I don't want that to be the interpretation. I know how hard Lacy works on this and I know that we all appreciate that hard work because this is, uh, I don't, I don't ever want to have anything to do with creating a budget. I, it, it makes my brain hurt when I read it. Um, Lacy, your brain is an amazing computer and I don't know how it works, but I appreciate it because it does and it's lovely. I don't, I don't want anybody to think that that is what the issue is here. The issue is that we are all seeing a public hearing on our agenda without information being available to the public and that is concerning.
No, whether, for, even if there was no COVID, you guys should be raising the issue of a, a less archaic form of, of publication. And that makes really good sense, but to the practical side with Ed, you know, it, this has to be done. Like, there could be, it has to be. You have to legally do it.
Okay, I raise a question again. Do we have an approval of the budget as presented? I'll move, I'll move approval of the budget. Do I have a support? So I, do I have a support? I have no support.
May, may I discuss something?
Yes, go ahead.
So I have a couple proposed amendments to the budget resolution before we approve it.
Okay.
So, um, one of them is something that I've talked about a couple of times in the past, but I would like to formally make a motion, um. Uh, I guess first I, just based on something you had said, um, we do have to come back and we need to amend this at a later date. You had mentioned August. Um, does the administration think August is a good time or would September be better?
August through September, we won't know until we get better numbers from, actuaria reports from the state. Of Michigan when they do a better job with the revenue estimating conference. We know this thing is gonna have a long tail. This is not your normal budget process. It looks nothing like how we've ever done it because we haven't had any information to base what the revenue is going to look at from the state.
Okay.
So this.
I understand we're working with a lot of unknowns, but I'm gonna make this motion, um, to add a clause to the budget resolution that states that the administration will bring back a budget amendment to city council at the second meeting in September.
Yeah, we can bring you an update by the second meeting in September.
Not an update of, of, I would like the budget amendment. I'd like an update prior to that point and then change it.
Wait, we.
I want to lock something in.
Okay, it may not need to be amended, okay? What you need is an update from us to see where the budget is. You may not require an amendment. What you need is an update to see if it does require amendments or a series of amendments to the budget.
Okay, then I'll make a motion. I, I guess if, do I save this motion for later if it's not going in the resolution? Or can I make a motion while, are we still in discussion?
Yeah, we're still in discussions.
Okay, then I will make a motion that the administration will report back to city council the second meeting of August, the status of the budget.
I'll support.
A second? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Need more discussion? Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that belongs in the budget.
No, this is just a.
I don't see any reason for that to be part of the budget. That's not what it's there for.
Wouldn't that be something in new business?
That's why I asked for clarification.
That's actually, right, that's why we asked when that motion should be made.
That, that should not be in the resolution. No, that is not an appropriate, uh, motion for that. What we need then, there are two separate motions. We need a motion to approve the budget and that be approved because you can't, we can't update you on something that hasn't been approved yet.
Then I'll make that motion later. May I move on to my next topic of discussion?
But we have to have.
I have to have approval of the budget.
It's still a topic of discussion on the budget.
Okay.
Somebody click at a pin?
Yeah, somebody mute.
I'm stressing people out, sorry. What I do. Um. Let me make sure this is worded right. So one of the things I would like to see us do moving forward with the budget is I would like to do some strategic planning. This is something I've mentioned before. Um. And I, this may or may not be the appropriate time, but this is something I would, this is a, a funding element that I would like included in our budget. Um, I would like us to provide for funding for a strategic consultant uh, so that we can go through the RFP process and we can begin this process for next year's budget. Um, but I've, I've estimated approximately twenty thousand dollars, um, that would potentially be needed for this expense, but I really believe that we as a council need to move forward strategically. Um, use an outside consultant, um, and, and put together a plan.
A strategic consultant for what?
Budgeting. So they need a council. Because I would like an independent outside person to work with council as they do with many communities in this area to sit down with us and come out with strategic planning for our budget.
Are you looking for a five-year plan to know where you're gonna be or?
We're looking for a projection.
No, 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 this is not projections. This is determining budget priorities. This is what council is responsible for doing.
And this is why we have a finance director to give us budget priorities. If we want to have meetings.
No, 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 no. That's not how that works. Council establishes its priorities to help guide the city manager and the finance director. But if we don't come together as a council and discuss, what is important for us as a council?
I understand. Now I'm trying to point out something. In the past, in past years, we haven't done it in probably the last couple of, three, four years. We used to have budget meetings, okay, that we would talk to each department of, of our city.
That's not what this is.
It had, and we would get an idea of what each department is doing and where we would actually look to the future or look to the past and what we can change. And then our finance director would take our input and give her or his input to us as to what direction of creative ideas that we can save money in other areas or spend money in, in more crucial areas, say maybe getting someone that we could use as a marketing person to better keep our Facebook page updated so our general public can be informed. But strategic planning, I, I get it, but we usually do that in April. But we haven't had any actuaria reports come in till when, Lacy?
Just recently, but typically speaking, the, the past several years for the city, there hasn't been money to prioritize. The priority, the priorities for the city of Hazel Park is to pay our, our employees and pay the, and pay the pensions and pay the debt and pay, keep the lights on. There is, it hasn't been, look, just last year was the first time that we said, okay, maybe we should replace some of these thirty-year-old vehicles that people are driving. So I can appreciate the strategic planning and, and, and you guys, as a council, obviously can decide what you want to do uh, within yourselves as far as hiring a planner. You're always welcome to talk to me about the numbers and what you guys, what you think, you know, where you guys would like to go with it as well. But just generally, in the, in the past several years, we have not had any money for any, anything else other than keeping us going.
The strategy was staying out of receivership or bankruptcy. That was the strategy.
Absolutely. For a lot of years. And making payroll.
Not that I'm against that, Amy. With, with what's happening with COVID, we don't know if we're not gonna be right back in that same boat.
This is a process that we would do around November, December, not in April. This is why I'm seeking an outside consultant. And this is something that especially depending on how things go with COVID, this is something as, I believe as a council, we should come together and sit down with a consultant and discuss our budget priorities. I understand that you're focused on staying out of receivership in the budget and very specific things. But those are your priorities and I believe we as a council need to do a deep dive to see if there's other things that should be priorities that we should find funding for. If we're able to pursue grant funding, that's something that would be determined in our, our priorities, that we could then pursue grant funding for something specific. This is supposed to be an opportunity. This is supposed to be an opportunity to come together well ahead of schedule to help guide the administration. I'm simply requesting, and I'm sure we can find the money because I know it's always hidden in the budget.
Hidden where?
Can't. I know how budgeting works. I've been working in government for a long time and I haven't had enough time to go through our budget in detail to tell you where I think we should pull it from. I'm simply requesting that we allocate some funding for strategic planning for a contract that we can put out to bid after we re-review the budget. And if we don't spend that money, then in that budget amendment, we can change that and put it back. But we need to think ahead and we need to plan long-term. And this is something that this community has not done in a long time. And as somebody who's new to council, but has a background in this, I believe this is something that we should be doing. And this is something that many communities in southeast Michigan already do. This is a best practice. This is, this is good for a community. I'm not, not trying to throw something negative. I know it's change and I know we're not used to change.
That's not, that's not the issue here. We've kept up with change. What we're explaining to you is you want to spend $20,000 for a consultant.
I want to put it out to bid, so I don't know the exact amount.
What are you bidding out? What, what type of consultants are you looking to hire?
Strategic planning. There are strategic planning consultants. This is a field. People do this professionally.
So I think then how this should work, hear me out now, please. See if this doesn't make more sense. We know already that we have a budget that is highly questionable. We know that. We didn't get the information to plug in from the state for, uh, until Friday the 15th. So it was a week and a half ago, we got the information. We're going to do a look back at the budget in August, okay? That might be a good time then in August to see where we're at, to see if we can get this consultant or whatever, okay?
Well, this wouldn't be attached to the budget anyways, would it? Isn't this just, wouldn't it just be a new?
No, no, no.
Yeah, this would be totally separate new business.
Well, it's going to be attached to the budget if you're out eating the.
Asking it to be attached as part of the budget. That's what she's asking for, an amendment to the budget.
Do that.
Then 20.
It just seems like that would be under new business as something totally.
I'm asking to make sure $20,000 in the budget in front of us today is allocated for strategic planning.
From where do you want to pull it?
I've. So. Budget.
I.
After I got off work today. I don't know. I'm asking the experts sitting behind you.
That's. We can make that decision in August.
Right.
We need to start planning now. You need to put together an RFP. You need to book, to put together a review committee. Those things take time, especially when our staff is, is minimal and sound. So you need to start now.
Okay, again, my recommendation is that we pass the budget tonight, that we take a look at this as we intended to take a look at this in, uh, August when we have a better picture of where our revenues are. Now, you also, as council people, we've got enough capacity in-house to do all kinds of strategic planning. What we don't have any information on this year was budget information. Now, we've got the internal capacity to do all kinds of strategic planning. What we need to have is a willingness from the council to take a look at these things and put the time in to do the strategic planning. So, uh, we can do this and we can set up all kinds of things for you in August when we know where we're at. But remember, in the past few weeks with very minimal staff, we've completed the master plan, we've done the budget, we've done all the marijuana stuff. This has not been a, an easy few weeks. Everybody's worked extremely hard. So give us a chance to make you some, uh, proposals on an entire strategic planning process. Uh, I don't think there's any magic in finding somebody from outside. I think I got a pretty bright city council. I think I got a pretty bright staff. What you guys need to do is find out the direction that you want to take this city, given the limited resources and wiggle room you have, uh, available to you, how you want to best spend those funds to give you the biggest bang for the buck.
Amy, uh, when you, can you give some examples of what some of the other communities that are benefiting from this are? Um, I mean, what are we looking at to gain? I mean, budgeting is very different. It's, it's difficult. I agree. I like what Lisa said. It makes your head hurt. Um, but I'm wondering when we, when the council gives out ideas, well, you know, we've done some brainstorming or, uh, you know, what our goals and objectives are, how, uh, what's that really going to be different from? How is a consultant going to be, bring something different, going to be different?
The consultant is going to be an independent party that helps aid the city council in putting together that information that it's, it helps, it, it's, it's considered a best, it's, it's good operational excellence. It gives us standards. Um, it lays out a lot of the things that we don't currently do. So. I mean, I, I've got, I've got a bunch of notes here, but it sounds like it's not going to go through. So I'll withdraw my motion and we'll discuss this in August and I'll have more information prepared for everybody by then.
Well, in the meantime, we really need to address our charter requires about this budget. And we, and we need to have the budget. They worked hard. We need to have a, we need to have a, a starting place to know where we're going to stand and where to go from. And the budget is critical to the well-being and health of the entire community.
I'll call a question again. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to pass the budget.
Do we have a support? Support. Do we have any more discussion? Distension? Motion passes. We have a budget.
Again, for the record, I'm sorry that you got this later than you normally get this. In an ideal year, we have time to have budget sessions. We have time to have all kinds of discussion on this. We know where we've got some little room in the budget and everybody can come to, uh, the table with their priorities and we can try to fund those priorities. This is not a normal year. This is not like any other year that I have ever seen. I have come to, I think, almost every city council meeting in the city of Hazel Park since 1985. I have seen budget sessions literally for 35-plus years. This has never been done like this before. We admit it, okay? There's no way it could have been done differently with the COVID-19 pandemic. What's happened to the state, what's happened to our revenue picture and the state's revenue picture is horrific and unprecedented. So we're sorry that we didn't get to get a lot of input on your priorities. Hopefully we can do that in August, September, we can put together this process and give you guys a chance to really deep dive into the budget and see how this works, how she puts it together, where we get our revenue from, and take a long-term look at this. We've got a lot of capacity in-house and we've got a lot of capacity on the city council. I don't necessarily know we need to hire someone, but we've got a lot of bright people, okay? Half of you guys have graduate training or degrees related to government. Everybody's got experience. I think we can make you very happy and you can make us very, uh, secure that we're following your wishes if we get a chance to actually look at this stuff in greater detail. We just don't know what this revenue picture is going to be in the next month, eight to October.
We're going to move on, talk about a little more of this, some new business. Uh, takes to administrative reports, approval of the 2020 draft of the master plan that's been distributed. Has everybody had a chance to look at that?
Yes. All right, folks, uh, this is Jeff. What we're looking for tonight is you should have gotten a memo. The memo did have an incorrect date on it because the memo was originally addressed the week before the COVID stuff really hit. So the, the memo really should say, uh, that the plan was approved on Cinco de Mayo, May 5th, 2020 by the Planning Commission, um, for your distribution to the other, other governing bodies. And, uh, the public as a whole, for the last time, we would be putting it on, uh, all the social mediums we are talking about to ensure further transparency and help hold another public hearing, uh, to ensure that the public would get one last comment on it as well as the other communities as well as Oakland County who does, and Adam and Sarah from McKenna are on the line who does a deeper dive than they used to do, and I will turn it over to Adam and Sarah.
Okay, go ahead, Adam and Sarah.
I'm sorry, rookie mistake. I was muted. Yeah, I haven't had enough of these Zoom meetings yet, I guess. Um, thank you very much for, um, having us here today with you. Um, I'm happy to be, um, bringing a draft master plan, which, uh, the Planning Commission has recommended for taking the next step. As Jeff noted, the next step in these, uh, process that's prescribed by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act is for, um, the city council, when comfortable, to distribute the draft plan to, um, adjacent communities, to the county, the SEMCOG, um, and to any, um, public utilities and kind of, um, infrastructure stakeholders in the, um, who have, um, investments in the community or their comment on the draft plan. That comment period shall be at least 63 days, so, um, that's something to note. Um, the minimum is 63 days, but some communities go longer if they feel like there's, um, you know, a reason to, um, have that window be open for longer. Once, um, you have received any comments from the neighboring jurisdictions, including all of the local units of government, um, that touched Hazel Park. Um, and as Jeff noted, including Oakland County, who actually, you know, does, um, provide a thorough review of the plan and provide comment back to the Planning Commission. Um, the Planning Commission would gather all of the comments that have been received and, um, determine, uh, their comfort for scheduling a public hearing to receive, uh, additional comments mainly focused on resident comments. At that point, um, once the public hearing has been conducted, the plan may be adopted by Planning Commission. And then, um, when the plan is adopted by Planning Commission, it is transmitted by the Secretary of the Planning Commission to the legislative body, which of course, um, in your case is city council. Um, so we still have a few months ahead of us. Um, and, uh, Adam and I are happy to walk you through the plan or answer any questions you might have. Um, one thing I wanted to note, um, is that we, um, had been reading, you saw placeholders in the document, um, gray, gray squares and rectangles. We had been waiting to take photos, um, for when the weather got better and then, um, we've been home. So, um, this week or next week, um, before the plan is distributed, we are going to go, um, the photographs that have placeholders in the plan.
Okay. Council, what's your pleasure?
Do we have, uh, do we have this in a PDF format? Or is it just this hard copy?
We can provide it to you in a PDF.
I'd, I'd like a PDF copy if I could.
Yeah, if you could get us a PDF, give all of us a PDF.
Is huge. It is enormous. So you have to get a drop link. It can't be in a simple PDF. It's a drop link.
In Dropbox?
Yes, because it's humongous. So, um, just so you guys are aware, because it's got maps, pictures, all these things that make it even unfeasible almost for a flash drive too much.
Can we make sure we have a secure drop link for people to access this online?
We have a city com Dropbox, yes.
Okay, council, do we have an approval of this?
I'll move approval of, uh, the 2020 draft master plan distribution.
Second.
Support.
Any more discussion? Distension? Saying none, we have master plan.
Well, we have.
Council, new business, Amy. Do we want to, do you want to make a motion to have this administration come back to us the second meeting in August with an update on where we stand with the budget?
Yes, I would like to reinstate that motion.
Do we have a support?
Support.
Do we have a dissension? Discussion? A discussion? Motion passes. Motion to adjourn.
No, I have more.
Oh, you have more?
I got more.
I thought we would just start with that.
Nope, I got more. I got other stuff too. Um, so this is related to the budget, but I knew I was going to hold off on this anyway, anyways.
Okay.
Um, this is mostly for information. I like to make a motion for the administration to provide cost estimates for the following positions, um, by that August meeting. Um, a, um, dedicated head of code enforcement, uh, communications person, uh, options being full-time and part-time, an economic development person that would be able to assist in Jeff's department as well as a general grant writer. Um, this is just so we can gather some information and depending on how the, the budget projections look in August, um, I think we should consider some of these positions.
Second.
So you wanted an economic development person and a communications person?
Economic development, communications, dedicated head of code enforcement and grant writer. I would like Lacy to, especially with everything that's going on, I, I think Lacy should work with, with the budget because I think she's going to have her hands full and I'd like to not have all of this multitasking, uh, that we have going on. I think it, it is not the best option, so I just like to price out the options.
And the grant writing part, would you like to have that RFP when we do that? So do you want to have a dedicated person on staff?
Um, I suppose we could price out both options, but I think that if we're looking at a potential loss in funding from the state, we're going to need to really look at pursuing more grant funding.
I get that, but I guess I'm saying there's different qualities of different types of grant writers and depending on what you're writing a grant for, you may have to RFP for the particular talent that you're looking for to get that person to write that grant.
Um, like I said, if we can hire a general grant writer with a broad spectrum of expertise and save these specific things like engineering for roads, obviously that's not somebody we would be hiring in-house. Um, or at least, I, I mean, I'm just looking for some type of information proposal uh, for these services that we do not currently actively pursue on a broad basis so that, um, if this is our new reality, we're, we're prepared and have some quotes for this when we discuss the budget again, so that we can make some informed decisions. Um, I guess I will leave that, uh, grant writing open for discussion.
In that meeting, okay. Is that a motion?
Yes, that's my motion and it was seconded by council member McFall.
Okay. Do we have any more discussion? Distension? Motion passes. Any other comments for new business?
I have no more. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, I know this is something you brought up. I don't know that we need to wait till the next meeting, but in general, I'd like to make a motion that all public notices shall also be published to the city website and other appropriate social media and newsletters with the accompanying information.
Support.
A more discussion, dissension, motion passes. Anybody else?
And that's all public notices, not just budget. That's, that's everything.
Anybody, anybody else? Any other, any other new business? Okay, those new business. Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Thank you. Dissension, discussion on adjournment?
I have one thing for comments from city manager.
Sorry.
This is not a normal budget.
Is this a pri, this a exec thing or something?
What, what's that?
Is this an executive session item you're talking about?
He just wants to say the municipal system of finance is broken because he didn't say that.
Yeah, I didn't say that, so I got to get that in there. So this is not a normal budget and this, again, we can get you all the quotes for positions in the world, but I don't know that we're going to have any money to be able to fund those positions. You may not have enough money to keep the positions that you already have in the budget today. So again, while I'm. So again, well, I'm hopeful that we're going to have a bounce because I believe there's a lot of pent-up demand. But like I said, we've been telling the state for a number of years that this, the system of municipal finance is indeed fundamentally broken and that the next shock to the system could result in a wave of municipal bankruptcies. So I know that this is going to have a long tail with respect to pensions and those things and decline in revenue. I hope we bounce out of it, I hope there's so much pent-up demand that we are back in the flack and we are ready to rock and roll for the future of this city. That's what my main goal is, I don't know if that's going to be the case.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You guys have a good week.
You do.
Next week, night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, stay safe.
You too.